I'd like to call this meeting to order. And first up, we have roll call.
Council President Corman.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven. I see him, sir. I think he's can't unmute himself.
He's muted. Thumbs up if you're here, Ryan. There you go.
We got it.
Hey, sorry, my audio wasn't working. I got it now.
Great, thank you, sir. And Mr. Prince, Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a proclamation to start the night off.
Okay, this proclamation is in support of Washington residents and families affected by farm bills in India. Proclamation, whereas the state of Washington remains a proud farming community that understands and respects the contributions of farmers in feeding nations, and whereas the state of Washington is home to thousands of farmers who still own farmland in their ancestral home, uh, excuse me, ancestral countries, and whereas numerous rallies have recently taken place across the state of Washington protesting three farming bills that were passed in India in September 2020, including the Farmers Produce Trade and Commerce Act, the Farmers Agreement on Price Assurance and Farm Services Act, and the Essential Commodities Act. And whereas the passing of the bills will result in the privatization of farmers' markets in India and will adversely affect the financial situation of many Washingtonians and their families back home. And now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim that the City of Renton stands in support of those Washington residents and their families who have been adversely affected by the Farmers Produce Trade and Commerce Act, the Farmers Agreement on Price Assurance and Farm Services Act, and the Essential Commodities Act passed in India. In witness whereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed as 24th day of February 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, thank you so much for reading the proclamation. And I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, motion carries. And I believe we have somebody to accept the proclamation with us tonight.
Mr. Mayor, Rupi Rahal was supposed to be here to accept the proclamation, but it doesn't look like Rupi is on the attendees list.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carr is also in attendance. She's in attendance right now.
Okay, let's see here. There we go.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you so much for this proclamation. We appreciate, as, as Indian farmers, farming community, our, our families back home, our farmers, and as we know, they're, you know, they're struggling right now. It's been past 100 days for their protest, so we really appreciate your support on this. And I want to thank Councilmember Van for her support on this at every aspect. So I, I really appreciate you giving us this proclamation. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President, and all the council members.
Thank you very much. And I guess we do have Rupi Rahal. Rupi, would you like to say a few words?
Same as what's at Twitter side, thank you so much. It's really appreciated. As she said, our farmers are really struggling in India to kind of get this bill thrown out. So it's a struggle. We're at 102 days today for the farmers sitting in this protest in Delhi. So hoping that, you know, if we can kind of get the government to see the support from abroad, it'll, you know, change something for our farmers back home. So thank you so much for the support from all the council members and the mayor.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, and again, thank you so much for your leadership and our council president and all of my colleagues, because it's really mean a lot to our community here in Renton and the greater Renton. Myself born on a farm and knowing that our district is rural as well, I think it's important for us to appreciate farmers and sending solidarity. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Okay, let's see here. Next up, we have administrative report.
And good evening, everyone. I have your administrative report. City of Renton's single-family residential customers may schedule one collection of extra garbage to take place on their regular garbage day between March 2nd and December 31st of 2021 at no additional charge. Please review the Clean Suite brochure located at republicservices.com forward Renton Clean Suite for instructions on scheduling your collection. The brochure includes items that can and cannot be accepted as part of this program, along with information on donation and collection sites for household goods that are no longer needed. The Renton History Museum is reopening on Wednesday, March 10th with all important precautions. Masks required, social distancing, frequent cleaning, and limited capacity. Because their capacity is limited to 25% or 15 people at a time, we recommend that visitors call or email for reservations, so you won't be disappointed. Please contact 425-255-2330 or rentonhistorymuseum@rentonlaw.gov. Hours for March will be Wednesday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. March is Women's History Month. Come enjoy our Women's History exhibit, What Difference Do Renton Women Make? A virtual open house about the Downtown Utilities Improvement Project is scheduled for Thursday, March 11th from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. This is an opportunity to learn about the project, which begins construction later this month. To register for the open house, visit rentonlaw.gov/duipwebinar1. Pre-registration is required to receive a link to the event. If you are unable to attend but interested in learning more about this project, visit rentonlaw.gov/duip. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is your administrative report.
Okay, thank you. So next, we will open the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included in our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by the city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of, "You have been unmuted." This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish up your comments when you see the time is coming to a close. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have seven people signed up in advance to speak. When I call your name, I will unmute you. Please state your name and city of residence. You will have five minutes to address council. The first person we have is Jessie Friedman.
Good evening. My name's Jessie Friedman, and I'm a Renton resident. I'm speaking tonight in strong support of the passage of the Humane Pet Store Ordinance that you'll be discussing in a bit, which would ensure that pet stores in Renton meet minimal health and safety standards for their animals. This is especially urgent, given the opening of a new Puppyland store location in Renton. Many reports have shown that Puppyland sources its dogs from inhumane puppy mills, and studies have shown that when compared with dogs not bred in puppy mills, former puppy mill dogs have much higher rates of serious health problems and early death. I would really hope that we can all get behind preventing the untimely death of puppies. Even after leaving mills, dogs at Puppyland and similar stores are isolated in small cages, and the Journal of Veterinary Medicine has found that this kind of isolation makes dogs disproportionately likely to become aggressive in the future. Like we all want to prevent deceased puppies, I would also hope that we would like to prevent an increase in aggressive dogs in Renton. Cities all over Washington State are passing humane pet store ordinances, and while we've unfortunately missed the opportunity to be ahead of the curve on this one, passing minimal requirements for the health and safety of animals should be an absolute no-brainer. I'll send the reports I've mentioned here via email and welcome the opportunity to discuss them further. Thank you for your time.
Ashley, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Ashley Dale, and I live in Puyallup, Washington. I'm the Director of Operations with Bailing Out Benji. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all again tonight, and thank you for putting a humane ordinance on the agenda tonight. As you know, Puppyland has opened in Renton. Puppyland is known for pushing high-interest pet loans, which result in consumers paying thousands of dollars over the purchase price for their new puppy. Along with this predatory practice, Puppyland is confirmed as importing puppies from Midwest puppy mills. Consumer complaints and inquiries made to our organization have allowed us to connect Puppyland to 13 different puppy mills in the states of Wisconsin, Indiana, Iowa, Missouri, Minnesota, and South Dakota. Many of these puppy mills have hundreds of dogs on site, as well as very serious animal welfare violations over the years. Some of the most common consumer complaints our organization receives regarding puppies purchased from Puppyland are that puppies are being sold with worms and giardia, which end up costing consumers hundreds of dollars in vet bills. Some of the most severe complaints include a puppy being diagnosed with two hereditary conditions and a puppy being diagnosed with hip dysplasia and luxating patella. Both of these puppies experienced these conditions before turning one year old, and both resulted in thousands of dollars in vet bills, as well as emotional suffering for the consumer. You have heard from many Renton residents by email, and you'll hear from many residents tonight as well. Renton residents do not want to support the puppy mill industry. I thank you for considering an ordinance and hope that Renton will be the next city to go humane. Thank you for your time.
Kathleen, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Powell, and I'm a Renton resident and a 14-year volunteer for South County Cats, which is also based in Renton. But tonight, I want to talk about Puppyland having opened in Renton. A Mr. Mayor and Renton City Council members, as the rescue coordinator for the Pacific Crest Kazon Club, which is also based in Renton, and a dog mom to Louis, who is a puppy mill survivor, I urge the Renton City Council not to support Puppyland and other similar type pet stores selling puppies and kittens in our town. My own rescue came from a puppy mill in upstate New York, declared by the Humane Society of the United States to be one of the worst 100 puppy mills in the United States. So I know what I'm speaking about. You might ask how that impacts Renton or even Washington State. Well, almost monthly, we hear about young animals seized from a high-volume breeder in the state. This is generally a puppy mill or a volume backyard breeder. Their product, and it is a product, is either sold directly to retail puppy sellers like Puppyland, or they're sold to a broker, who then in turn sells them to Puppyland for an even higher price, because the broker is the middleman. They are all profiteers in business simply to make a profit, period. They don't care about genetics, breeding a healthy dog, or even about early socialization for temperament. These pets are caged until they are sold with little to no human contact. How this relates is when we hear about dogs being seized in Washington, usually 100 or more at a time, this puts a burden on local animal control, rescues, and shelters to house these frightened and filthy pets-to-be, clean them up, vet them, spay and neuter them, and find foster homes willing to rehabilitate them. This all costs the city and the community dollars. There are probably backyard breeders in Renton, as they are everywhere, so I urge you to break the chain of supply. Fewer businesses like Puppyland will diminish the profiteers engaged in this continued cruelty. And as an aside, these puppies are certainly not spayed or neutered when they are purchased at Puppyland, and they may never be. So this leads to more pets in need of homes, which further puts burden on animal control, shelters, and rescues in our area. Thank you very much.
You're muted, Judith.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the next person we have is Charlie Lapham.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pavoni, City Council. My name is Charlie Lapham. I am speaking also in support of the pet store ordinance that you're considering tonight. I'm a proud Renton resident. This is actually where I bought my first home, up on Arlington Hill, in 2019. I frequently speak to city governments on labor issues through my job at the King County Labor Council, but tonight, I'm actually speaking on my own behalf. It's my first time giving public comment on an issue here in Renton, so I'm excited about that. When I learned about the humane pet store ordinance that you're considering, I did a little research, and I'm a dog owner, as is my girlfriend. And to be honest, I had no idea how inhumane the conditions are in some of these stores. These poor dogs are brought in from these puppy mills that are brought in on trucks, and like the previous speaker said, packed into tiny cages. They're subjected to horrible treatment from the moment they're born. And these stores do this knowing that these dogs are likely to develop health and behavioral problems. And these problems are problems for our whole community as well, when you have a dog with a behavioral problem. And this is all just for these stores to earn a quick buck. Puppyland, like everyone's been talking about, is just five minutes from my house. I see it every day, and I even have a sign twirler out front. You just Google them, and you can see all the complaints about their business practices. So I know some of you are pet owners, but even if you're not, I think we can all agree that we should have safe, humane standards here in Renton for all animals that are sold. That's my appeal to you, and thank you for your time.
Perrin Kaplan?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Perrin Kaplan, a local resident. I am a CEO of a global company, but more importantly, I'm founder and president of Saving Great Animals, a local nonprofit that rescues and heals dogs, and match makes them to loving families who treat them as a pet and a member the rest of their lives. To date, we have home more than 9,000 dogs and hundreds of cats. We are here to thank you for considering a humane pet store ordinance. We encourage you to do so for a variety of reasons, including that your own citizenry would be horrified to one of the conditions of the parents of these puppies. The parents never see the light of day, literally. They are used to create all the puppies sold in these inhumane and only-for-profit chains like Puppyland. In fact, I have a rescued one myself. Saving Great Animals rescues abused and neglected dogs and cats, but also are the last hope for what we call puppy mill discards. The young females and males who have had dozens of litters and now are of no use for profit. Rather than being shot and tossed in the garbage, matted, unrecognizable, covered in feces, toothless, we help these dogs regain their health and be held for the first time and learn to live freely. But these are only the ones that we hear about. There are millions of puppies and dogs killed every year, yet profitable puppy shops are allowed to function. And I know, I just know, our society can do better than this. Washington is a bellwether state, and Renton is a brave and caring town. Thank you very much for listening.
Jessie McDonald?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for giving me this moment to, to share with you also about Puppyland. I'm a resident of Renton, and when I first moved here back in 2006 to, to the state of Washington, to the city of Renton, the city did not have such a great reputation, and people kind of wondered why I bought here. Since that time, though, the mayor and council members, you've done such a great job on the reputation and, and improvements throughout the city. But in my personal opinion, the allowance of Puppyland to open a store in Renton is a step backwards. Not, it's not only my opinion, but many of my neighbors I've spoken with, and they've also expressed the same sentiments. The United States Humane Society did an investigation into Puppyland franchise. And in their investigation, they uncovered the, the facts that Puppyland gets their, sources their dogs from puppy mills and backyard breeders for merchandising through a company called Jax, J, period, A, period, K, period, S. It's a USDA dealer and of... I think they're based out of Iowa, and they financially support inhumane puppy mills and backyard breeders. And not only does Puppyland exploit animals, but also the people with their exaggerated prices and inflated interest rates on the loans that they provide people to purchase their animals. They have high-pressure salespeople that are working on commission, and this type of business model does not represent the city of Renton the way we would like it to. And many of your constituents would prefer to have that business out of business. Pet stores in Renton do well enough selling pet supplies, and they can increase their traffic by allowing adoption events for company or for nonprofits such as Saving Great Animals and Rescue Unleashed and dozens of other local rescues. Adopt, don't shop. And in summary, I'd like to thank the city for supporting the humane pet store ordinance, and also I would like to ask for your support for House Bill 1424, Puppy Mill Free Washington. Thank you for your time and attention.
The next person we have is Ali Kamara. Ali, go ahead.
Oh, hi. I'm, I'm sorry. When I sent the invite, I simply wanted to be a part of the meeting because I want to start attending. This is my first. I apologize, but I did not mean that I wanted to actually contribute. I just wanted to be a part of it. I don't have anything to add. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, that is the last person I have signed up in advance to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council? If you'd like to speak, please use your computer to raise your hand. If you've called in and would like to speak, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. I see one person. Jane Warden, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jane Warden. I'm, I live in Renton. I'm a Renton resident. I just wanted to chime in then and agree with everyone that just spoke. That's why I'm attending this meeting, and I really appreciate everyone showing up here in support of that, and I appreciate the council here tonight. So thank you.
Lou Meek, go ahead.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I did not prepare.
Lou, would you still like to speak?
Hello?
Hello, would you still like to speak?
Yes, I, I thought I was talking, and I just realized that the microphone was off. I, my apologies. I'm a resident of Issaquah, but my kids attended the school district in Renton. We are all animal lovers. We have rescued various animals from Saving Great Animals and also from neglect, other two that we have. I'm very saddened when I heard the news that Puppyland was moving into Renton. We are in 2021, and we should not allow the company the profits on the horrific conditions that these dogs are being bred for. It's just money, and the people that own these puppy mills don't seem to care about the well-being of the animals that they are producing. They're not a factory. Living creatures should be taken, should be treated with respect. And I really hope that everybody listens to this. So many people of Renton that don't want to see animals suffer. Thank you so much.
I see no one else. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Corman. Yeah, thanks. If I may, since, since all of the testimony was on the humane pet store ordinance, I just wanted to point out, for the benefit of anybody else that's watching the meeting tonight, that Item B of our consent agenda actually has the, the work on Title IV docket, 16 items, that within that docket is a humane pet store ordinance. And that the process, if the council adopts the consent agenda and that item, will be to pass the issue to both our Planning Commission and our Planning and Development Committee, which is a subcommittee of the council. And there will be more opportunities for, for public input, and we will, you know, we will follow the process we, we follow when we make laws and change development regulations. But, but that Item B is the one that, that clearly the speakers had found that in the agenda because they were referencing it, but I just wanted to make sure that people understood how the council would be acting on that tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I want to, first, I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your day to participate in this meeting. It's always good to hear from our residents. And this is an issue that, that the administration is taking very seriously. We know from, from, you know, just past history that Renton does really care about their animals. It's a very important topic to a lot of our residents. And so this is something we're taking very serious, and, and we'll be doing work on it in the next couple of weeks. It, it still has to go through the, the normal process. It's, and it will start tonight after the council passes it. I'd also like to point out, I think we did have one speaker bring up House Bill 1424, which is better known as the Human Pet Sales Bill. And that was actually passed today in the House. You might want to call your senators and, and show your support for this in the Senate, because that is the next step. because that is the next step for this. Then it becomes a statewide issue and not just city by city. So with that, I think it is time to move on, and here. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. There are six items for council consideration.
Would any councilmembers like any item removed from the consent agenda for special consideration? Seeing none, I move approval of the consent agenda as published. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by councilmember, Council President Corman, seconded by Council Member McGurbin, that the consent agenda be adopted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have unfinished business. Council President Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benedetti?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has two reports.
Thank you. The first report from the Finance Committee is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. One, accounts payable, total payment of $4,880,857.15 for a number of vouchers, including payroll benefit withholding vouchers. Payroll, total payment of $1,446,527.91 for payroll vouchers, including 560 direct deposits and two checks. This is the February 1st through 15th pay period. And then finally, municipal court vouchers totaling $15,807.05.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding a water quality grant agreement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the water quality grant agreement, WQC-2021-Renton-00187, with the Department of Ecology to accept $230,250 in construction grant funds for the Heather Downs Detention Pond Water Quality retrofit project.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
As this project is a stone's throw from my house, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
That's the final Finance Committee report, sir.
Okay. Councilmember McGurbin?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. No unfinished business.
Okay, Councilmember Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning and Development Committee has a committee report.
Okay, this is regarding 2020 Title IV docket 15, Group 8A, Site Plan Review and Mixed Income Housing in the CV Zone. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt amendments as outlined by docket 169, Site Plan Review, and docket 174, Mixed Income Housing in the CV Zone. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for D-169 and D-174 be presented for first and second reading at the first available city council meeting after March 19th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Prince?
I move that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And next up, we have legislation.
There's no legislation tonight. Yes, sir.
Okay, we're on to new business. Council President Corman?
Hi.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start with sort of a little bit of a walk-on item. Doug Levy is, as we all know, working closely with the legislature and is saying that it would be an advantage if the city council could show support for a new revenue transportation investment package at the state level, and Doug would like to show that support and call out the specific projects that would be dedicated for Renton. We, of course, through our priorities and through Doug's work, have been aggressive about getting projects in that list. And so I guess I'd like to, I'd like to just kind of ask the councils, kind of for the support and also opinion about, there's a couple of ways we could do that. One is the mayor, and perhaps I, as council president, could draft a letter of support. Another is that we could come back with a resolution for support. And, you know, any of those are okay, and I don't want to be presumptuous and assume the council's in favor of support. So I thought I'd kind of like to get a little bit of an indication from council on that. May I ask if any councilmembers would be against expressing our support for transportation investment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
Has this information on the specifics been disseminated to us?
Yeah, there's no, there's no new projects. It's all projects that we've been supporting through our legislative agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, if I could ask you, do you know if Doug has a strong preference to resolution versus a letter?
Well, I think time is of the essence, so I think ultimately, you know, if council is comfortable with us drafting the letter, we could certainly send it out to the group before we pass it on. We can go either way.
I, to me, that seems like that would be effective, and so I guess I'd like to propose that. I don't know if we need a formal resolution for that. What we're basically doing is just sort of expressing again our support of key projects that were part of our agenda. But Doug says it would be timely, and there's an effort to get a specific transportation package through right now. So if everyone's okay with it, I guess I'd just ask maybe that Doug help prepare that letter, and that the mayor and I could forward a draft version around, and if nobody has objections, we would just sign it. Does that seem reasonable to everybody?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Prince?
I think that makes a lot of sense, considering where we are in the legislative session.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Prince. Okay. Appreciate that. Okay, and then moving on with new business, the committee of the hall is actually canceled for next week. We have some items that the staff's working on for us, but nothing's quite ready for our review, so we're going to cancel that meeting. And of course, we do have a council meeting next week at the regular time, 7:00, video conference. And I've already announced the council retreat for March 20th from 9:00 to 4:00, so that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, March 15, at 4:45 PM, we will have the Public Safety Committee via video conference. We have four items on the agenda. One is safe place initiative briefing, second, equity lens training, then RFA briefing, and emerging issues in public safety. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Van?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Benedetti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, March 15, at 4:00 PM, the Utilities Committee will be meeting via video conference. We have two items on the agenda, the Highlands Reservoir Services during construction, and emerging issues in utilities. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember O'Halloran?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurbin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Would like to announce that the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, March 15, at 6:00 PM via video conference. There are two items on the agenda. First is houserway intersection and pedestrian improvements projects for Pritit Incorporated, and then second is emerging issues in transportation, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one last piece of business here. I'd be remiss to miss this. Today is International Women's Day, is a global celebration of the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. The day also marks a call for action for accelerating gender parity. Marked annually on March 8, International Women's Day, IWD, is one of the most important days of the year to celebrate women's achievements, raise awareness about women's equity, lobby for accelerated gender parity, fundraise for female-focused charities. International Women's Day, it was celebrated for the first time in Austria, Denmark, Germany, and Switzerland on March 19, 1911. So with that, what is the wish of the council? Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Prince?
I have no new business, and I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember, Council President Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, thank you all. We adjourn. See you next week.
Bye, thanks.
Stay safe.